Okay, thank you everybody for coming to the Cheyenne City Council work session for the Urban Renewal Authority and Downtown Developmental Authority Updates July 7th, 2023. For everybody on Zoom, if you could please mute yourself. As with all work sessions, no public comment are taken. I will go to Zoom first. I know we currently have Councilman White on Zoom. Currently here at the dais, we have Councilman Cook, Councilman Royble, myself, Councilwoman Aldrich, Councilman Escabel, and Councilman Labor and just entered the room. For introductions, I would go ahead and pass this off just for housekeeping. At 12:40, I have to go back to work, so I will be handing the meeting over to Councilman Escabel. So Mr. Bloom, if you'd like to do your introductions, please?
Mr. President, members of the city council, Charles Bloom, Planning and Development Director. Here with me, we have Lonnie Olson, Planner with the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development Office, and Tom Gaberkevich, he is the Downtown Development Authority Administrator. So we'd like to get into this presentation today. What we're going to do are over two topics. These two topics are two different areas that are both under the same chapter of state statute, 15-9 of state statute. It's the Urban Renewal Authority and the DDA. What we plan to do is highlight what the Urban Renewal Authority is, what their powers are, and then we're going to open up for about 10 minutes of questions. And then after that, then we'll move forward onto a presentation with the DDA. We'll follow that also with 10 minutes of questions. With that, we'll go ahead and start off the slideshow.
So starting it off, we're looking at what the Urban Renewal Authority does. So it's founded on the state statute 159101 sequence. So the Urban Renewal Authority does BITE studies, and the Urban Renewal Authority then recommends that to go to the governing body. Urban renewal plans and projects are adopted and approved by the governing body, but those do get a recommendation by the Planning Commission prior to being at city council. We have TIF application reviews, which is tax increment financing. That's one of the tools that the Urban Renewal Authority has, and that has staff review and recommendation to the URA. And the URA will review that and lead direct us to then create a development agreement. And that is the URA directs the staff prepares it, and it gets ultimately approved by the governing body. So the URA is intentions. So they want to create planning projects for specific areas with authorized public activities. Upon approval of the plan and project, assessment distribution is frozen at the last date of equalization for all properties in the plan and project area. And we'll go over what that looks like in a few slides. The increment is transferred into a special fiduciary fund for individual plan and project areas. So each plan and project has a separate fund. So the Hitching Post has one, 15th Street has one, and the Heinz and the Hole has one. And then so property owners or developers within the plan and project area may make an application to the URA to utilize the tax increment financing in accordance with the authorized activities specified in the plan and project. So the plan and project will have activities that are a public purpose, and the then applicant can apply to have those worked out with tax increment financing. The developer secures private funding to carry authorized improvements authorized under the plan and project, and a reimbursement agreement is executed to repay the developer's debt for public improvements upon generation of the available funds. So we're looking at state statutes here, and this is pretty much what the municipality delegates to the URA, and so and also what they don't. So here, the determination of a slum or blighted area is recommended by the URA, but then the city council or the governing body is ones that determine that it is blighted or slum area. The city council has to approve urban renewal plans, the general neighborhood renewal plans. And the main one I want to highlight here is this was brought up in the Heinz and the Hole previously, and that was 159114, the condemnation. And so the URA has no power to condemn. They can recommend condemnation to the city council, but the city council is the only entity available available to condemn and use eminent domain on real property.
And oh, I was just going to state to just expand on the condemnation proceedings. The only way a property can be condemned as part of an urban renewal project is if it is spelled out in the plan and project. When we had the Heinz and the Hole plan and project that came in front of the governing body back in 2021, it had initially been presented to the URA board for review and recommendation, and the initial recommendation was a provision to acquire that property through condemnation. It was recommended by the Planning Commission, who also reviewed that to you all to remove that condemnation provision, which you all did elect to remove. The power for condemnation, the stage is set with that plan and project, but there would still be another final action that would have to occur for any condemnation. So just approving a planning project for a rehabilitation of streets or creation of a of a public plaza or something along those those lines, that would not that would not automatically trigger the ability for condemnation if it wasn't spelled out in a plan and project. One more item I would just like to note is urban renewal plan and urban renewal project. They are interchangeably used in state statute. They both have a circular definition that references each other. So we incorporate both in the title of them and call them urban renewal plans and projects. So those are those those projects that you see in front of the governing body that will start that increment.
All right. And the next one, this is the statute that authorizes tax increment financing. I know it's a lot to see, but it pretty much just says a portion of the levy taxes in each year in excess of or is for we'll go more in depth of what TIF is. So this is just reviewing state statute. So when a plan and project is in place, it freezes the taxes that the entities receive in any increment, then can be moved to the planning projects fiduciary fund. And so by another part of this is indebtedness. So by creating a plan and project, that creates indebtedness. So that allows you to start collecting the TIF. And so now I'll go more into what TIF is. So here's a fun graphic. So you can see at year zero, that's when the plan and project would be implemented. And so the bottom is frozen, and so every taxing entity then receives that amount for the duration of the plan and project. And the light, the gray shaded or light blue is the increment that is collected through the redevelopment and the use of the increment. And then by the end of that time, or so ours are 25 years, as someone graphic says 20, but by the end of the 25 years, then the taxes go back to all the taxing entities. And the goal with this is that you'll raise a lot more of a tax base through this by using the TIF. And the tax taxing entities then will get a much larger sum of tax revenue rather than the general gradual increase that you see.
Yeah. And to expand on that, as a property owner in a tax increment financing district, what you'll see on day one, your taxes are the same. You will still receive the same tax bill based on your property valuation. So a property owner will still see it. It's just that distribution of where that tax payment goes. It changes. That increment goes to that specific purpose of the plan and project. All of the other tax agencies like Ghul District, any possible districts, special districts, city, county, state, those items, they will get their historic tax payment that they they would get for that 25-year period. In our case, 20-year period here, with the vision in the end, that after everything has rebuilt, expanded, turned to new, that new tax collection will be higher than what it would have been if nothing were done during that time period.
And so this is a fun graphic. So we've been working with various people at the county and within the city to understand this, how the whole tax stuff works. And so this shows our current plans. So you have the July 2021 Hitching Post Plan and Project, March 2022, Heinz and Hole and 15th Street. And those were done between the June 2021 date of equalization and the June 2022 date of equalization. So thus, since they're done in between that, we will receive increment for fiscal year 2022. And the tax year is a calendar year. So that just if the Hitching Post was done in May of 2021, then we would receive taxes for the 2021 tax year. But since it was after the date of equalization, we will only receive the 2022. And that's just because of how all the taxes are set up. We didn't really get too deep into the taxation statutes, but this was all done working with the county assessor and treasurer. And so we'll move further. What is a BITE study? So a BITE study looks at the area to determine if conditions of BITE set out in 159103 are met. What does it do? It fulfills a portion of 159107 that the governing body by resolution has determined the area to be a slum or blighted area or a combination thereof, and designated as an appropriate for an urban renewal project. So by doing that, and it enables the next steps for the creation of plans and projects, and then thus the utilization of TIF. So what is a BITE criteria? We have deteriorated or deteriorating structures, retominance of defective or inadequate street layout, multi-lot layout in relation to size, accessibility, or usefulness, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site or other improvements, diversity of ownership, tax, and other special assessments, delinquency exceeding the fair value of the land, defective or unusual conditions, a title, the existence of conditions which endanger life or property by the by fire or other causes or other. So per state statute, we only need to have one condition of BITE met. But we do seek to have multiple, because other other places do have multiple, and we just think having multiple builds a better BITE study rather than just hitting one. And so here's a map of areas that are have the BITE declaration in Cheyenne. So we have the Hitching Post, the Reed Rail Corridor, 15th Street Corridor, and the Heinz and the Hole. Those are all as of now. And so after we have the BITE study, then we can proceed into a plan and project. So what is a plan and project? It's a plan implemented by the governing body in an urban renewal area to eliminate BITE and prevent this prevent this spread of slums and BITE through redevelopment. And what does it do? So it freezes tax distribution at a specified date or a specified period of time. So that is the tax increment that we get then start collecting. And the it also encourages urban rehabilitation by having the conditions or by setting the things that you can use tax increment financing for, then it can encourage rehabilitation by getting those public improvements more more or less financed for, and you have that repayment through the TIF. So it helps bridge that gap to redevelopment. And it provides opportunities for redevelopment of slum and blighted areas. So let's go through our current plans and projects. So the first one that most people know of is the Hitching Post. So the eligible activities deemed in the Hitching Post Plan and Project are infrastructure upgrades, public improvements, including stormwater drainage and detention facilities and remediation of environmental contaminants. So so far, we have been able to see that the environmental contaminants have been remediated. The old structures are gone, and those are all disposed though properly. Currently, there are infrastructure upgrades and public improvements happening in the Hitching Post area with the creation of Paul Smith Way and the relocation of sewer and water lines to facilitate development easier. They were currently running through where a couple of the hotels are proposed. And so moving forward, we have one or two approved development agreements. The first one is for 1.2 million, and the second one is 460,000 for the environmental remediation or demolition of the structures. So the first one was approved for the demolition, and then it came back that there was overages. So that's where the 460,000 come in, or overages from the initial one. And we have a pending development agreement for 1.44 million for the construction of Paul Smith Way and regional stormwater detention. This was deemed an eligible expense by the Urban Renewal Authority, and we are currently working with the developer and financing institutions to get the whole reimbursement terms and financing plan set up. And the city council will then be hearing the development agreement coming forth.
And as you can see on this, the first year TIF generation for that was $3,200. Really, what you're looking at is just the background increase in land value, because nothing had changed. For next year, we're expecting the increment to be a little bit larger. Presently, we have a building permit that is on file and in the city's review process for a Ever Home Suites Hotel. That would be a three or four-story hotel that is located on the southwest corner of that site. Another lot has changed hands for a second hotel to another corporation that intends to construct. At that time, we do not have a building permit in, but we have had some site plan inquiries. And then also in that urban renewal plan and project area, Hampton Inn, which is being constructed at the former Atlas Motel site, that is presently going vertical right now. So even when you start to have partial improvements, like partial structures just framed up, that will represent and the increment being generated, that's more than just your land value. So that's that's what's happening right now at the Hitching Post when it comes to development. So we're happy to see it moving forward and getting vertical so that increment can start to build itself. Unfortunately, it's a little bit slower than expected, but it looks like it is it's going to start building.
And so our next plan and project area that we're going to highlight is the 15th Street Corridor. The eligible activities are street rehabilitation, repair, utility relocation, restore and improve historic structures, facilitate economic development and site beautification, and support demolition of structurally unsound buildings. And so we currently have no development agreements for the 15th Street Corridor, but we have had a first year TIF generation of $7,700. So I want to perform a little bit better, but again, they are there's actual structures there rather than a dirt lot as seen in the Hitching Post. And the final plan and project that we have is the lovely Heinz and the Hole. Eligible activities there are improved streets, including curb gutter and sidewalks, utility relocation, restore and improve historic structures that have fallen into disrepair, and facilitate economic development and site beautification. And so currently, we have no development agreements, but we have been working with the current owner of the Heinz Building to work through. There's been some visioning exercises. It is a big project, as all of us know. It's been attempted multiple times, and they're trying to get all their ducks in a row before they start. So we do foresee one coming in the future, but we're just waiting on that. And so the TIF generation for that was $1,200, which isn't too bad for only being two parcels and one of them being a whole. And so looking ahead, what what is the Urban Renewal Authority doing? So currently, the Jolly Rogers and Expanded Downtown BITE Study is on city council's agenda. We have a planned or an upcoming plan and project in the Expanded Downtown if passed to support hotel development. We are working with the county commissioners on an area of operation discussion. State statute allows the Urban Renewal Authority to expand their area of operation within five miles of municipal limits into the county. So we're looking at what does that entail and how would this work to help facilitate redevelopment on some of our urban fringes. We're working with some economic planning firms to formalize a third-party review process of pro formas for entities seeking to utilize TIF. So we're doing that to help to determine that the gap that the developers have in these redevelopment or in these projects is actually true. And so we're currently working or in conversation with one firms, one firm in Denver, Colorado, who they do all these for the front range. So they are, they know what they're doing. And so we're working with them to see what this would do and what it would entail on upcoming development projects. The Urban Renewal Authority has a requirement to have a prequalification letter or a letter of intent to execute a development agreement. So that's just a letter stating from a financial institution that, yes, we do want like have a money available for a loan, but it might those typically have to be fleshed out more. It's just a more like, yes, we're in good standing and let's proceed. And then we're having reoccurring meetings between the city and county. So it's city attorney, city planning, city treasurer, county assessor, county attorney, and county treasurer. As we are pretty much the only urban renewal authority that's operating in the state to this degree, we want to make sure that what we're doing, both sides are on a common understanding and that we're progressing in a way that helps both entities succeed through this. Because it's, there's not much guidance. So we're creating a map as we walk along. So we want to make sure that all those involved understand what we're doing, and we're not stepping on anyone's toes.
And I guess I would add just one more thing real quick, which is we are actually looking at other areas that we can possibly look at further BITE designations in the community and outside of the community. One of the goals is to look at trying to support more housing opportunities. That is one that we're early in the process of looking at identifying different sites that would work. We could help offset some of those higher infrastructure costs to look at housing in all different areas of the community. So next, we have a little question period. It'll be about a 10-minute question-answer period. We are hoping that that would work, but it's not. That was a countdown timer to keep you all on task. So we'll move in in 10 minutes to the DDA presentation. So with that, we're open for any questions you may have regarding the Urban Renewal Authority.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bloom. To go, like I stated on Zoom, Councilman White, did you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Through you, President Johnson, to either Mr. Bloom or Mr. Olson. Can you talk a little bit more about this area of operation discussion? This is kind of the first that I've heard of this. And so are you having like, what type of meetings are you having with the commissioners? And is that something that any members of council can also participate in or help facilitate?
Councilmember White, thank you for the question. Great question. We had a very early discussion with one of the commissioners, Commissioner Thompson, early on, and then we invited the commissioners to attend this work session. If they were unable to make it, we were going to send them a link to the video one so they could listen to the presentation. Our goal is to have some upcoming work sessions and discussions with them about the area of operation, because as you're aware, there are a lot of areas of the community where you might have state limits on one area. We might have unincorporated county right next door. If we want to utilize any type of tax increment financing in a plan and project area, we need to make sure that any proposed improvements, possibly water, possibly sewer, curbing gutter that might be necessary to serve a development, that we could incorporate those into a plan and project without having to ensure that it is in the city limits. I'll provide an example. There is a we'll look at the Ridge Road development that was proposed up on Ridge and Hall and Court. There are some concerns about water and sewer and the extensive cost of water and sewer. In the event they were to look at a single family type of development there, they would need some type of support for water and sewer, which would require connections through areas of the unincorporated county. So in order to create a plan and project for that area to help support a vision that may be better aligned with a vision of the neighborhood up there, the neighbors, we would want to be able to have that urban renewal area overlap into the unincorporated county. So we're not annexing additional property up there. So long story short, we are looking to continue that conversation, and we can definitely work with council members to invite some of those folks to the table so we can continue to have those discussions with them to the overall how that would benefit those parties.
Thanks, Mr. Bloom. And yeah, I think I think that certainly we want to have discussions with our counterparts on the commission. And yeah, if you could make those meeting times are available to council members as well, that would be great. No further questions. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
We also have on councilman seat right now. I'm not sure if he has any questions. He does not have his hand raised, but I thought I'd let you know.
Since he does not currently have his hand raised, Councilman Royble, you have your.
Excuse me, just a couple of quick questions. On a blighted area, are we specific bordered? So if there's like a business in there that's open, they're not included in it?
Mr. President, through you too, Councilmember Royball, if the business is located within the the BITE study, that land has a declaration of BITE. Again, BITE is probably not the it's not a word that everyone likes to hear. It has a very negative connotation. But what a BITE study represents is that in that area, one of those BITE criteria exists. And that can be something as simple as that curb and gutter that's deteriorating. It could be that a property is located in an area that is within a floodway or flood plain. It could also mean that it has title is title history issues where it has a clouded title. It could also mean that the amount of debt on a property is not able to be recaptured through market conditions. For example, look at the Hitching Post, one of the criteria out there was there were so many leans on the property that complicated redevelopment. There's all these outstanding issues. So when it is declared BITE or is declared slum, there's nothing recorded on the property. There is nothing that would show up in a title search, like an abstract, there's nothing that would be picked up by a Realtor, and it would not affect the valuation of the property from the assessor. It's just essentially a title saying, yes, this is an area where we have another tool in the toolbox that you can use to help to help with facilitate development.
Thank you. And the second question I have is on a timeline. How fast from the day I walk in with my project and say, I've been declared blighted. Here's my project. Is it a do we work at the speed of business or the speed of government?
President Johnson, through you to Councilmember Royball, I like to say that we work at the speed of business. There sometimes are unfortunate delays that do occur, but we can move forward fairly quickly with these plan and projects. The biggest hurdle right now, for example, using the downtown hotel project, is that we need to have that BITE designation put into place first, because that's the first step to open up, basically put the toolbox out there. And then the next step would be to come in with a plan and project. With the hotel plan and project, we're hoping to have that one up in front of the Urban Renewal Authority and the Planning Commission, and then the governing body this fall, likely August or September is when we're looking to have that one moving forward. And we're working with the developer to help meet their timelines and their goals for that project.
Then through you, Mr. Chair, final question is, we got a 25-year TIF on the Hitching Post. What if it doesn't generate enough enough income to pay that off?
President Johnson, through you too, Councilmember Royball, great question again. The way we structure the development agreements is they are reimbursement based. So this is the third step. We have the BITE study, the plan and project, and the individual development agreement. Those are set as reimbursement only. So the developer has to enter into an agreement with a financer. And then as the increment generates revenue, it would be distributed to the to the lender through an agreement. And we are limited to only what the increment generates. So for example, right now, we had $3,200 for the Hitching Post. If there was a payment of $5,000 due, we would port over our share that we've received, and then they would be responsible for the difference between them and the lender. So we don't have risk. The treasurer is very. And then they would be responsible for the difference be between them and the lender. So we don't have risk. The treasurer is very appreciative of. The way we structure the development agreements.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Archer.
Um, President Johnson, through you. I have a list of questions here. Um, so my understanding, I just, you showed twenty years and twenty-five years on the TIF agreements. And the hitching post is a twenty-five will and Fifteenth Street and the Hines and the Hole, is that also twenty-five or is that a twenty? I'm was confused why we were shown twenty and also we've been talking about twenty-five.
Uh, Council President through you to Dr. Aldrich. Uh, that is our fault. It wasn't the best of a example. It all of our plans and projects are twenty-five years.
Eight.
Twenty-eight years was just the best graphic that we could see that uh illustrated how TIF works.
Okay. Um. Also, President Johnson, through you. My understanding is is that we have not, the city has not actually received. Any payments yet. We may have calculated, but we've actually, has this thirty-two hundred actually been received and deposited in that account?
Uh, Council President through you to Dr. Aldrich. Uh, we should be receiving the increment. Either by the end of this month or next month. Uh, so we are in our meetings with the county assessor and treasurer. Uh, they have different. So taxes are due May. In May of twenty twenty-three. So then. What happens is that they are waiting for a lot of the properties to resolve if they're indebted or if they're delinquent. They're waiting for them to uh resolve that delinquency, that delinquency status, and then we'll receive the increment. But, yes.
President Johnson, through to Dr. Aldrich. Yes, it's that last dot on the far right there. Um, it's June or July. That's we're expecting that the increment will be distributed. There are some delinquent properties. Within the districts, they're waiting to have those cleared up um at the tax sale. The tax sale would be the first Thursday after Frontier Days. That's per the county website. It's a specific date. It's the first Thursday after Frontier Days. That's when the tax sale would be. And then we're continuing to have communications with this as this is a uh new uh process. It's been done once before a long time ago, but. Um, there aren't records of how it was done in the past. So we're going to continue to work with them to make sure we um all understand how the distribution will work.
President Johnson, through you with the Hitching Post property, uh. Is who is the title holder of that property currently that would be responsible for the taxes?
President Johnson, through to Dr. Aldridge. Uh, the. It's our understanding that the title holder is, I think it's Hitching, it's sixteen. Hundred uh Hitching Post LLC. Um, a new uh LLC has come in. Or the other hotel, I believe that one is Maeve LLC, but I do not exactly know when that property was acquired. And if they were responsible for any of fiscal year twenty-two's taxes. But the. There also are additional properties within that plan and project area. There's the um hotels to the west. There's the. Hotel um which the Hampton owned, which is under a JKP LLC out of South Dakota. Um, and there's uh also Dodzer LLC, which has a. The land commonly known as the back forty. So there's a, there's a variety of them. Um, and they're really looking holistically at the city. With um making sure that all delinquent taxes are paid prior to uh distribution. So it's not basically saying, hey, there is. Definitely uh delinquent property in this area.
And President Johnson, through you, my understanding is. From looking at the maps that that uh Hitching Post. Uh, U R A ends at Lincoln Way or does it cross Lincoln Way to the south? And include the uh warehouse across the street. Looks like it does not include that.
Johnson through you to Dr. Aldridge. It does not go to the south. It is just the area north of Lincoln Way.
Well, it is concerning when looking at the past due tax records that the developer happens to be of that property happens to be listed in the delinquent tax notices in the newspaper this week. Though that's concerning as a uh council member that we may. Be investing in individuals that aren't currently current on their current bills. Um, I also am curious, um, the indebtedness by the city when you talked about that. Or the infrastructure and things like that. Are we reimbursed then out of this? Fund as well, or is that?
Council President through you to Dr. Aldrich. Uh, so the city would have to apply for the tax increment financing and they would be reimbursed through it.
And is it the city's plans to do that?
Council President through you to Dr. Aldrich. Uh, I am unsure of that. We haven't had any conversations with other city entities seeking that. But it could be something that happens in the future. Because right now, uh, the Hitching Post. Area, the developer is creating Paul Smith Way, which will service the. Two hotels, the China Ice and Event Center, and eventually the gymnastics facility. So that's all being put it by the developer of that project.
And my last question, President Johnson, through you is, and I guess this is more of a comment. I'm really concerned uh about taking on uh multiple U R As. Recognizing that that uh tax increment funding would be diverted into, that additional funds would be diverted into a special account. For the next uh twenty-five years or the remainder of the years after that property is developed. Um. Are there any uh proof of concepts or case studies uh that you found in our region that? Um. Look at communities who have over U R A'd and put themselves in a bind where they're not able to. Uh, utilize those additional tax funds?
Uh, Council President through you to Dr. Aldrich. Uh, so our neighbors to the south uh have very similar state statutes. So we've been. I've been in contact with a lot of the U R A authorities down there. And so basically what I've been learning is that when they have larger areas declared blight, they'll have smaller plans and projects within those areas. That way it doesn't affect the greater taxing entities. So you might have varied. Projects that once maybe twenty-five years and five years later, you have another one. But they do work and they. Uh, the thing is that you have to be really diligent about how much you approve and how much you don't. And one of our main concerns is with. If we would include a giant residential area that in the school district would then lose out a lot of that funding. So we're. Being really cautious when we do proceed with plans and projects and reach out to the taxing entities to let them know that this is happening and have conversations with them about it. But I have not seen any case studies of it being overutilized. Uh, there is one in New York City. Hudson Yards is a new big development that was done. And that one deemed to be very successful. And it helped uh move redevelopment to this area that was recently previously a rail yard and now it's a. Quite a bustling area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Councilman Escobar.
Uh, thank you through you, President Johnson. As far as the whole, have we ever done a a site study or anything about what type of projects would be available there?
President Johnson, three day Councilmember Escobal. Um, there have been a variety of different studies. Some have been done privately. Lonnie had mentioned that the present owner is looking at programming models. Um, they're working with Leeds, who's the owner of the whole um to identify some um options there. There was a study I do recall. I don't know the exact date. I want to say like two thousand fourteen or sixteen that showed a parking group facility concept. With a mixed use, like an office and commercial on the front. So there have been some very high level conceptual designs that have gone on. Um, as the Hines and the whole projects move forward with the uh landowner and leads, I'm sure additional concepts will come to light.
That's the only one I had. Good. Okay, because it is uh currently twelve forty. At this point, I will turn this uh meeting over to Vice President Escobar. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, we're still on U R A. We'll go to Councilman Labor.
Thank you. So. I saw in your slide there, the. Study of the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor. But I didn't hear any mention about. Its status and uh. I'm curious about that.
Councilman Escobal through you to Councilmember Leavorn. Uh, so the Reed Rail was done as the initial uh area blight. So that was what helped create the Urban Renewal Authority because. Per state statute to have an urban renewal authority in your jurisdiction, you have to have areas declared blight. The Reed Rail and the Hitching Posts, Reed Rail Hitching Posts and the Hines and the Hole were all included in that initial one. Uh, there has been no plans and projects enacted. Uh, staff is waiting for redevelopment to really take foot. That way we can capture the best increment to help. Help further the redevelopment of the corridor.
Well, I think the point is that uh with our recent contract execution with the. The designers, um. That has to fit in somehow in that timeline and is something I'm very interested in. I uh. I. Uh. I have a lot of questions that I don't think I'm have time to get answers to this afternoon. So uh maybe I can visit with you. Uh, Mr. Olson, uh. To really come to understand. The future. U R As that are coming before the council. Um, that's a. I I frankly, my concern is biting off more than we can chew. And as to use that expression and uh. Exactly how. They've come along because certainly it's a important tool. Um. And. As a representative of West Cheyenne, I certainly am glad we're we're doing this. I just um. Look forward to visiting with you more extensively. Thank you.
Okay, staying on U R A. Do we have any further questions on Zoom? I would only do the follow up on on the whole. Do we have any possibilities of working with leads to? Possibly at least temporarily. Uh, do some type of a. Field girder structure in in there that would support a a boardwalk of some sort where. We could still have some type of events. On that. Basically be like a a big long deck.
Um. Councilmember Escobal, um, we haven't had those discussions with them yet, but those are uh definitely ideas that we can bring to the table with the redevelopment. I know that they have their. Their committees put together that's analyzing um the highest and best use for that land and how they can make it cash flow. You know, how the whole development can cash flow and um have positive outcome. So those are definitely things we can bring to the table with them.
Hey, so I know the Hines has been over forty years. The whole fire was in early. Late two thousand eight, I mean. Like that. Okay. We got fifteen minutes. We can start on uh DDA updates. All right, I. Let's see, have any final things to say about U R A? Closing.
Councilman Escobal, through you to the members of the council. Just if you guys do have any questions, feel free to reach out to staff. We're happy to answer any of them. So. Please feel free, feel free to reach out. My office is always open to chat about these things.
Hey, I'm I'm sure they will. Uh, anything else, Director Bloom?
Uh, nothing else, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to uh DDA and it's still looking like we're gonna probably have to do a continuation on it, but we'll get started. Uh. Go ahead, Dee.
Once you're members of council, we only do have about uh five slides on the DDA, so it's it's pretty quick, a little bit of an update here. We have Tom Gabarkovich, who you all have met a couple of times now. He's the DDA administrator. Um, he's the one who's the boots on the ground that's doing a lot of the um networking with the businesses and everything like that. So what we're um gonna go over here is the authority. Um, again, this is side by side with the urban renewal uh statutes, in-state statute. The DDA is actually another tool for urban renewal and it's in the chapter. It's in a title. It's in chapter fifteen-nine, which is titled Urban Renewal. Um, the vision or the mission of the DDA is to develop and promote the downtown. It's there to represent the owners of downtown. Um, on the side with the DDA, we're also a Main Street organization. Uh, which we'll talk a little bit more about what we're I'm doing for Main Street. And the Main Street really is a a national organization that. Um, supports businesses and business development. The DDA um does not have a ton of power that they are basically a group that. Will uh make recommendations on plans, projects and programs that ultimately the governing body will enable. Um, state statute uh requires that the board um for the DDA be appointed. Um, and they are the final decision makers on a different um overall plans of development for the downtown. Uh, the DDA has the authority to make those long range plans for development. That's what's dubbed as the Plan of Development. Um, we have uh several plans of development that presently um overlap each other and amended. Have been developed since nineteen ninety-one. Actually have four documents and one of those documents includes two sub-area plans for a total of. Six different plans of development that all guide programs, growth and rehabilitation of the downtown. Uh, there is a special mill levy. There's a mill levy that is voted on every four years. There's an upcoming uh mail-in election that will be in. Uh, November of this year. Uh, last time the election was held, which was twenty nineteen, it increased from ten mills to twenty mills. So it'll be again a question uh through mail-in. Um. Uh, it'll be a question uh through ballot um that will be, would you like to continue the twenty mil mill levy? Um, one of the thing that's unique with the DDA is they have the ability to also utilize tax increment financing. However, it's a different type of tax increment financing. This is through a sales tax TIF. Same concept. It will freeze sales tax collection at a certain date and time. Anything that uh is increased taxes. That will go to a dedicated project that also has a statutory twenty-five year time limit. Um, in the past, there was a TIF, a sales tax TIF in the DDA um boundaries. That was when uh Shan Power or Shan Fuel Power and Light. Um, had their operations in the DDA district. Um, that. Uh, tax increase of the increased taxes on people's utility bills that was directed to the Downtown Development Authority. For about three or about four to five years, the DDA was seeing about four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in a sales tax increment. Um, that increment program essentially ended when Black Hills Energy moved outside the DDA district. Um, so basically it was um underperforming. Uh, so no increment was being delivered. Uh, the DDA's uh. Sales tax TIF expired on its own quietly in two thousand eighteen. Um, after its usefulness had worn out because it was not producing increment with the exodus of Black Hills Energy from the district. Can we talk more about that? If you have any questions, um offline about how that worked. Robin Lockman has a lot. City Treasurer has a lot of information on it. And one of the most important things with the DDA is it can provide funding assistance to property owners provided those uh that funding is um. For public facing improvements, improvements to the right of way, um awnings, uh facades, uh public plazas. Private plazas provided that they are there for a public purpose and and open to public use. The DDA district, this is what it is. This is the map we've had for quite a long time. We're talking about updating it into something uh new, a little bit more modern. It encompasses seventy-four blocks. It's a mix of businesses and residences. We have the twenty mil levy. The mill levy is again in effect for every four years. There's an upcoming election, November twenty twenty-three. Um, only income generating and tax paying properties may vote for the mill levy. Each property owner gets one vote per property. Um, single family um houses, uh those folks are not individual to vote. Uh, apartment owners uh for units or more where they're multifamily apartments, they're able to vote offices, businesses. A tax exempt entities like the uh city and state county aren't able to vote. Uh, Councilmember Leaborn, did you have a comment on the multifamily? Perfect. And. Uh, the board is uh defined by state statute and how many members can be on that board. Uh, state statutes, I keep it open and there's five to eleven members. Um, with our specific uh DDA. Uh, there is. Uh, a mandate that we have ten members exactly. So we have ten members uh for the DDA. Of those five to eleven members, a majority or just over fifty. Of those five to eleven members, a majority or just over fifty percent must reside, be a lessie or own property within the district. And state statute requires that one shall be a member of the governing body. It's not optional, it's a shawl. And presently, Councilmember Leaborn is your DDA, uh, board member. Uh, again, the bylaws mandate ten members, um, and collectively, uh, what the board does is the board provides direction to the DDA staff. Uh, we had the agreement that was put in place, uh, back in April, April of, uh, twenty twenty-two, which created the partnership between the city and the DDA where city was supporting, uh, the DDA with staff. Technically, I serve as the DDA Executive Director. Um, and then we have hired staff that, uh, we pay salary benefits, pension, all of that. Um, instead of the contribution to the DDA. Um, in that agreement, there's, uh, discussions about the board members, how they interact with staff. Um, a mutual respect, uh, regarding the, um, board direction. Uh, there's a requirement that the board, um, have consensus with our direction. A lot of that comes in to the plan of development, which sets the stage for what actions we do. Something we've been working on with, uh, the DDA board is we're trying to be very transparent with the projects that we do when we bring forward to make sure that they are all on the same, um, page. Um, one of the more recent ones, um, Councilmember Leaborn had the idea about, uh, kiosks. So we've been bringing a discussion on kiosks in the downtown area to the board for direction. Um, our present members are listed there. We just did, uh, reappoint Nita Rosinsky at the, one of the recent council meetings. Uh, Janelle Rose, Judy Moss and Landon Medina are all new members to the DDA. So what are our next steps, um, with the DDA? Um, right now, what we're looking at is continuing to move forward with the Capital Improvement Grant. Uh, this is a program that has been in effect for quite a while in the downtown. Um, it did, uh, kind of steer away in a different direction, uh, just briefly, but we brought it back to its roots. Um, presently, we have several, uh, capital improvement grant requests that are going to be considered at the upcoming DDA board meeting. We're looking to bring back the facade improvement program. Um, that one has, uh, been on, uh, pause, uh, recently. The facade improvement program is something that is, uh, continued with the Main Street Partnership. Um, with the Main Street certification that we have. One of the requirements, uh, for the facade improvement, um, program is to have a design committee. Uh, we've been beginning discussions with the DDA board as to what that design committee looks like. Right now, the DDA, uh, board has essentially, um, assigned, created the design committee as a subset of themselves as a special, um, a special, um, committee, um, which is acceptable, um, to be a design committee. Uh, we're investigating, updating and consolidating all of the past plans development, the past plans of development. Uh, they range in time from nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-three, uh, two thousand, uh, six, two thousand sixteen. Uh, we're looking at modernizing that document. We're presently, uh, chatting with different consultants. Um, take, to get estimates that we can bring forward to the DDA, um, on what that would look like um, to the DDA board. Ultimately, any, uh, plan of development would have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and then approved by the governing body. Uh, Tom has done a wonderful job, uh, working with the, uh, it's called the Downtown Collective, which was formerly known as a Cheyenne Downtown Business Association. He's been attending the meetings. He has a, a good discussion, uh, with the business owners and the chair of that. What else are we looking at doing, um, over the next course of the next, uh, year is adding a staff member. Uh, we need to add a staff member to support the Main Street Initiative, which, uh, through agreement with the city. Uh, the DDA and Main Street are one. Um, so to continue with our certification, we need to have a, a staff member to support that initiative. And then we're looking at opportunities to bring on interns, uh, that could be L triple C students, it could be UW students that may be somewhere in here. Um, partner organizations like Laramie Main Street, um, or I should say partner other regional organizations like Laramie Main Street. Um, they highly utilize interns for a lot of their programs and activities. Uh, uh, Mr. Gaberkevich has reached out to L triple C and I think he has paid his um, dues to secure interns by volunteering on an advisory committee over there. So it's kind of a trade. So we're really working on, on creating that staffing and that additional support. And then we're going to also look at doing the, um, just the, the the organizational updates. We need the, uh, looking at that webpage up to date. We gotta get the, the bylaws revised or some things with the bylaws that need some correction. Um, and also just increasing transparency with the way the agendas and minutes are distributed and, uh, put online for access. But with that, um, I just turned this off. There we go. Uh, we're open for any questions. Apologies for the short time, um, period here.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Aldrich.
Uh, Chairman Escobar through you. I'm just curious, uh, you said that the mill levy that they'll be going out for in November, I believe for this fall is twenty mills. What amount does that generate?
Chair through you to Councilmember Aldrich. I believe the last mill generation that we're, I did was about four hundred and seven thousand, around four hundred and seven thousand. Uh, we're waiting on that final number. Uh, we don't, we don't have the final number, but I believe four hundred and seven was the thousand was the estimate. Um, that we're expecting, which would also follow payment.
If that fails to pass, will it revert to the ten mills then? Or is it twenty or nothing?
Chair through you, it would revert to nothing. It's twenty or nothing.
Okay, um, and I'm assuming that we're taking steps to help ensure that that passes with education and uh, door-to-door campaigning because it's, there's only, I guessing there's only how many people that vote in that, a hundred?
Chair through you, uh, to Councilmember Aldrich. I don't have the exact number on the properties. Oh, there's about three hundred. Um, we are in the stages of creating a, a public campaign. Uh, one of the important things is to bring some of those interns on to continue to have that conversation. Go door-to-door, network with the businesses. Mr. Gaberkevich has, uh, definitely put his, uh, feet on the pavement to communicate to different folks. And we're presently working with different property owners. So we're continuing to move forward with that and and work on that.
My last question is, uh, Chairman Escobar, is just about the Main Street organization. I was under the impression that we did not participate or do not participate in the Main Street organization process or project. Um, the last time I met with some, uh, representatives of Wyoming Business Council, so I'm very interested to know that we are part of that again. Um, and and that we have, we're looking at staffing that position.
Chair three to Councilmember Aldrich. Um, yes, we actually met with Kayla Cler. She's a State Main Street Director. She's local here in Cheyenne. And with Heather Tupper of the Wyoming Business Council just about, uh, two weeks ago, um, to look at the different accreditation levels. Historically, um, there, they have been an accredited Main Street organization. Um, I believe right now we are missing a couple of pieces to maintain that accreditation. But we're actively looking to get that accreditation back. So that's going to be a further discussion we're going to have with the, uh, the DDA board. That's also something that we need to, um, really look at the previous agreement as to what other steps may be necessary to continue forward with that. But the Main Street program does open up some other, um, funding opportunities. It also does allow for, um, a lot more work directly with businesses and supporting businesses.
Councilman Leaborn.
Thank you. Well, um, this transition from Visit Cheyenne DDA to city-run DDA was a difficult process that, uh, has a lot of considerations in terms of those grant processes, in terms of the feeling some have about how it occurred. And that is, uh, really important to me because of the Mill Levy election. And, um, elections are something that I think we who get elected, uh, know something about. And I think that is very important and I'm very involved in that process. And so one of the key things that I discussed with Tom yesterday was, um, the meetings that you've been having about the, uh, coordination of those existing plans with a plan of development, which and of course that plan of development will be the guiding document that we'll be taking around to those people to look at. Uh, and say, this is where your money is going to go and this is how it's going to work. Because that is something that, yeah, three hundred property owners through that various means that are legal. Um, that's, uh, very, very important. So, um, am I going to be included in the invitations to those continuing meetings, please?
Chair three to Councilmember Leaborn. Um, yes, we can continue that discussion and I need to talk with Tom on how those meetings are happening and what we're looking at doing. But yes, we can definitely, um, look at making sure that, um, you're included.
And so can you give us a little background on, uh, this is a internal effort that you're doing right now in preparation for, uh, hiring a consultant to assist us in that development plan. What's the status of that?
I chair, uh, through you to, um, Councilmember Leaborn. Um, presently, we've met with three different consulting groups. Um, they put together some scopes. Um, we're looking to get some price proposals that we hope to have in front of the DDA board in, uh, August of this year.
Well, I look forward to, uh, learning more about that. I, uh, think it's very important that I um, am involved in that process and understand, uh, what, where we're at at this present time. So I would say in conclusion here that, um, I'm in a very unique, unusual position here. And and I, one that I hope can be effective. Um, as a downtown property owner, council member, DDA board member and chair of the Reed Avenue corridor steering committee, there's a lot of, uh, different pieces that have to fit together. And, um, one of the things that I, over my years of experience with the DDA is, uh, how actual improvements to the downtown area and maintenance of those improvements is a, uh, city responsibility. It's within those various departments and their responsibilities. So, um, I hope I can be helpful in coordinating that so that there's a better understanding of sanitation, um, engineering and the various entities so that we are uh, not having, as was the case in the past, the DDA off by itself. I think that that's the advantage of moving it to the city, which I support. Uh, but I would also say that there's some real, uh, consideration of time slipping away and I, I, I hope we can get to, um, I believe that we're going to have an election of officers that are meeting next week. And I hope we can get to, uh, some subcommittee and some basic, uh, meeting structure that isn't just one monthly meeting. There's a lot we gotta cover. There's a lot going on. Very wonderful things going on. But as, as we noted with the, uh, URA considerations, how it all comes together means communication. I can't possibly, uh, communicate, uh, to my colleagues unless I'm very, very involved. So, uh, thank you.
Hey, absolutely. Uh, Councilman Leaborn is the liaison to DDA. When, uh, you get the chance to get to attend those meetings and have an opportunity to brief with leadership of the governing body so we can let the rest of the governing body know what's going on and, uh, forward those other questions that members might have to you to the board and if there isn't any further questions on Zoom or from the DAS, uh, and then any last minute, uh?
Chair, Chair three to members of the council. It's like to mention, I accidentally skipped over one slide. Basically, in the interim, you can read it right there. We've um, looked at a lot of cost savings. We're looking at even more cost savings. I'm removing duplicate duplicate services and everything. And then there's our partnership agencies that we're working with in the city to, uh, really collaborate and make sure that we can, uh, move forward and use our resources. My items we're really working, um, on is what's our city treasurer, treasurer, which finance, um, is on that to help, uh, with the way we, um, run our books and process our payments, which will result in some other extraordinary savings that we haven't, um, put in there. So there should be more money to utilize to do projects.
Hey, great. Uh, I know it's in the infant stages here, this being under the city and, uh, we look forward to future meetings and having some reports back to us through our liaison and and the rest of the governing body. Uh, thank you both for being here and, uh, giving us the updates and both great programs. Look forward to being the patrician of, uh, this meeting is adjourned.